Terron Gaddis is the pastor at Greater Bethel Baptist Church. I'll ask him to lead us in the invocation afterwards. Think I'd learned how to turn the microphone on before I got started. Make that my new goal. Pastor Gaddis is here from Greater Bethel Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Psalms 105 verses 1 to 5 says, "Oh, give thanks to the Lord. Call upon his name and make known his deeds among the people. Sing to him and sing praises to him, and tell of all of his wondrous works. Glory in his holy name, and let the hearts of those who seek the Lord rejoice. Seek the Lord and his strength. Seek his presence continuously. Remember the wondrous works that he has done." Here in Oklahoma City, we have a lot to be thankful for and grateful for. We live in one of the greatest cities and one of the greatest traditions and with extraordinary history. But our greatest gift is our people who come from so many different backgrounds and create the energy and synergy and generosity of our community. So let us turn our hearts for a moment of thanksgiving to the Lord, who makes all these things possible. Father in heaven, make us honest stewards of the world that you placed us in. Make us good guardians of the dignity that you've given as birthright to every human person. Help us to reach out to the suffering and the persecuted, and protect the lost, the least, and the left down, the poor, the weak, and the immigrant. Help us to reflect our light to others and show by our actions and our truth integrity and service that hope still is the purpose of our community, and we share that one with another. In a special way, bless our leaders, especially our mayor, Mick Cornet, for his determination and dedication and deeds of service to our city. We thank you, Lord, for the impressive progress that he has led our city in recent years on many fronts in improving the lives of our citizens and making Oklahoma City a big league city. We thank you for leading Mick as he leads the way to the dramatic improvement on the quality of life. We thank you for allowing him and the city council and all the city workers to making the life in Oklahoma City better by building stronger neighborhoods, by building better schools, and by building impressive and improving infrastructure. Much has been done, but much still needs to be done. So, Lord, we just also include in this prayer our neighborhood leaders, members of city council, city staff, and all of those who serve in public life. Guide them in building a civil order that honors your law and your love. Give us the eyes to see your holy face in each other and to live in love accordingly. And pour down your grace upon Oklahoma City, all of Oklahoma City, so that those who come after us will see beyond the buildings and the history and industry of our city to the great beauty of the goodness and the decency of our people. We ask this in your son, as your sons and daughters, confident in your love and your power. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Mick Cornet.
I, Mick Cornet.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As mayor of the City of Oklahoma City.
As the mayor of Oklahoma City.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Development Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Development Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Myriad Gardens Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Myriad Gardens Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City River Redevelopment Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust.
Trustee of the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority.
Trustee of the Oklahoma, the Central Oklahoma.
Oklahoma City, uh, excuse me, Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority.
Oh, gosh. Trustee of the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority.
Correct. Trustee of the Emergency Medical Services Authority.
Trustee of the Emergency Medical Services Authority.
Trustee of the Lake Atoka Reservation Association.
Trustee of the Lake Atoka Reservation Association.
And finally, trustee of the McGee Creek Authority.
And trustee of the McGee Creek Authority.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you all very much, and I appreciate Pastor Gaddis coming down here and giving the invocation on this special day. I wanted to introduce my family and friends. I'm very honored and appreciative, and I want to thank everyone who took their time out of their day to come by here today and be a part of this. We have some other business to attend to. We have some dignitaries here who are younger than our typical dignitaries, but I don't know what else you can call. The high school basketball team from Douglas High School, they have won four state championships now, five. Time flies. And it seems like we have them back in here every year, but we can't celebrate this enough. Five times they've won the state championship in a row. Coach Kudjoe, you want to bring your guys up? Everybody come up.
Well, there's Kendall Cujo, a standout on the basketball court at Douglas High School in the seventies, and quarterback of the Trojans, 1976 state football champs, returned to his alma mater this season to coach. Whereas despite returning one starter from the 2013 state championship team, the Trojans finished the season with a record 22 to 4 and defeated Stillwell 78 to 50 to claim the 2014 Class 4A state championship. Whereas it is Douglas's fifth straight state title, the most consecutive titles ever by any Oklahoma team in any division. Whereas the team dedicated the season to the memory of Coach Cujo's sister, Kelly Cujo Nance. Whereas in the course of their championship run, the Douglas High School varsity basketball team demonstrated the value of dreaming big, working hard, and pulling on the same rope towards a common goal. And in doing so, they have represented their school, their community, and the City of Oklahoma City in a truly championship fashion. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby congratulate Douglas High School on winning the 2014 Class 4A Boys' State Basketball Championship.
And believe it or not, fellas, we have to vote on this. So we need a motion in a second.
Since this is in Ward 7, I'm so happy that Douglas High School is in Ward 7. The Kudjoe family is definitely dear to my heart. Coach Kudjoe's brother, Cal Kudjoe, was one of my history teachers in middle school and high school, and also was a coach. And also, I do want to recognize the principal of Douglas, Mrs. Davis. Her husband is a fine police officer with Oklahoma, well, for our city. And so with that said, and I also wanted to congratulate my young brothers for stepping up to the plate, not only academically, not only socially, but also in the level of sports. I move for approval.
Cast your votes. And it's unanimous. What do you know? Now let's show our appreciation.
On behalf of the Douglas Trojans, we'd like to thank everyone for coming today. And this is a very special day, a very special team, to win five consecutive state championships and make history. I'd like to thank my principal, Mrs. Davis, and my coaching staff. And it's a very special year. We fought adversity from day one, and as we talked about, the memory of my sister. And they dedicated this season to her as well as to themselves and their school and community. So once again, we would just like to say thank you.
We appreciate. Congratulations. And if you guys need a bigger trophy case, let us know. We want to keep making room for more. Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. 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 You bet. Thanks. Congratulations. Congratulations. Way to go. Okay. All right. Thanks, Coach. You bet. We also have our Teacher of the Month in today. Kent Hathaway is here representing the Mustang Public Schools. And every month, we recognize one teacher, courtesy of the Oklahoma City Rotary Club, that allows the council and I to select one teacher from Oklahoma City. And I'm trying to find him. Oh, right there. You're hiding behind my family. Kent, come on up and bring everybody with you. Come up, Steve. And again, we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Kent Hathaway has been named Teacher of the Month for April 2014 by Mustang Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Kent has been at Mustang Elementary School for five years and teaches art education. Kent never planned on becoming an educator, but found that teaching came naturally to him, and he paired this gift with his inescapable passion for art. Whereas Kent empowers and inspires his students to give voice to their ideas and dreams. Whereas, under Kent's direction as Mustang Elementary's resident artist, the school has won three national titles in the Made by Milk Carton Creation Contest. The winning pieces of art sculpted by the students include a 375 cubic foot coral reef, the Golden Gate Bridge, and a 32-foot tall space shuttle. Whereas for the past four years, Kent has put on the Trash and Fashion Show, where the artwork is the outfit made from recyclables like cardboard, bubble wrap, and duct tape. The designs go from the kids' imaginations to the fashion runway. Whereas besides teaching, Kent spends time fundraising for art education and scholarships, sharing his methods with other learning institutions, and working on his own artistic endeavors. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Kent Hathaway on his selection as April 2014 Teacher of the Month by Mustang Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. And we're going to need to vote on this one as well. A second. Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. And Kent, congratulations. Tell us a little bit more about the sculptures that your kids have won national contests.
Well, I'd like to say first of all that I love seeing Douglas come in here and winning five championships in a row. We're going for our fourth championship. I feel like that's a testament to Oklahoma students for doing the best that they can. We have excellent students here. We do. Milk carton sculpture contest kind of started out as a fluke. We literally take milk cartons right off a lunch tray every day. We collect them. Over the year, we get thousands and thousands of cartons, hand wash every one of them. Students have to design and construct with some guidance from myself, of course, on how to build these things. You know, these are elementary students from kindergarten, which are the best painters, by the way. And all the way up to fourth grade, every student is included, despite capability or disability. Everyone's in. And these features are museum-quality sculptures that have been featured in museums. Pieces of all of them now are touring the United States on what students are doing with just a simple milk carton. And now we are, you know, we go for our fourth championship now, and that'll be finished up this week, and I can't wait for it to be over.
What is your fourth sculpture?
Fourth sculpture is to be revealed next week, sir.
I could sneak it out of you. All right. Congratulations. Let's show our Teacher of the Month. Thank you. Thank you. And item D on the council agenda is a presentation from the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy Williams comes in periodically to update us on the chamber's proceedings. Morning, Roy.
Good morning, Mayor. Mayor, Members of the Council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you once again for having me here to give you a little economic development update highlights. I've got a number of areas I want to make mention of, so I'll be quick because it covers a lot. First has to do with the current legislative session. The governor has either signed or is in the process of signing two of our priorities this week. One is the Quality Events Act that we have worked on for a number of years, which gives us the ability to compete for horse shows, athletic events, things of that nature. A great example of it was just a couple weeks ago when the NCAA Wrestling Championships were here. That's the kind of a project this particular incentive will help us continue to get. Huge impact to our economy filled all the hotels within miles. And I think if any of you were downtown, you noticed the presence. People were here from everywhere. The second one is the film rebate extension. This is one we've been working on for a while as well. The legislature's passed it, put it on the governor's desk. And that's extremely important to not only keeping the film and music talent here, but also the people who work in that industry as well. So very vital to growing that creative sector that we've been working on. And the last thing I'd mention in the legislative arena is the American Indian Cultural Center. I think all of you know about it. The vote happens on that tomorrow. And based on comments today by the Speaker of the House, we all know that he wants 51 Republicans supporting this particular initiative before he'll bring it to a vote. So if you have not talked to a House Republican in the last couple days, this would be the time to do it, because we do need to try to get that moving forward. Legislatively related as well, in late March, a couple weeks ago, we returned from our annual Washington DC fly-in. We took a record number of 55 people to that. We met with each of our five congressional members, as well as both US senators, on issues that are all dear to us. Our major focus, as it is always, had to do with Tinker Air Force Base, defense funding, infrastructure funding, and discussions about what the future holds in that area. We also had very good meetings with Pentagon leadership. We got to meet the newly appointed, not yet approved, Secretary of the Air Force, as well as the four-star general who is the chief of the Air Force. And at the same time, Mayor Cornet was up there testifying before, I guess it was a House Transportation Committee, Senate Transportation Committee on specific project here in Oklahoma City. So we were able to have a little bit of synergy there. I regret to inform you that after we left Washington DC, we had a commitment from the Secretary of the Air Force to come to Oklahoma City this past weekend. Unfortunately, there was an issue in her family that prevented her from coming. We were going to be meeting with her both Sunday and Monday. It would have been her first time to Tinker, so we were excited about being able to show her what's going on and to continue to get the Air Force's support of what we're trying to do out there. So she did promise to reschedule that. We look forward to when that happens again. Some specific economic development projects, two very significant locates that have just been recently announced. The first was Baker Hughes, 475 jobs, 128 million initial capital investment. There's more to come behind that. What is nice about this particular project is it is more than manufacturing. It has a significant R&amp;D in it. And like GE, we're really getting some synergy in the R&amp;D industry. And so we're really pleased that Baker Hughes made the decision to put that facility here as opposed to really any place they could. Additionally, that Northrop Grumman is in the process of hiring. They've already added over 100 new employees. These are all aviation aerospace engineers and workers. And they're anticipating another 50-plus in the near future and hopefully more in the longer term. Overall, we're seeing pretty steady activity in the recruitment side of everything. As well, we have completed nearly 100 visits with existing companies already this particular year. 24 of those, we've actually helped. We're going through expansion phases, either capital expenditures or employment. And in total, 53 so far of the 98 we've talked to have said they are going to add jobs. So we're seeing very good positive response from companies that are here. In the retail area, we continue to see success. Work in this area is really paying off. All of you are aware of the Ohio Development Company, Glimcher, who has purchased a lot of the Chesapeake property. I've had personal relationships with them since I lived in Ohio. It's a great company to be coming into Oklahoma. They have great national presence. They know that development business, and we look for really good things coming out of that. As well as that, we're preparing for the international, or the ISCE recon, which is in Las Vegas coming up. That's the biggest event for retail development. It's an international show. We will be there as always. We recently lost our key retail person. We had recruited her from El Paso, and El Paso recruited her back. But I'm pleased to say we have replaced her. We're not yet ready to announce it, but the person who will be taking over will be in place before the show and going with us and has a lot of experience at ICSE. I was with the mayor a couple weeks ago when we broke ground for Phase III of the Albert Mall expansion. For those of you who are really not familiar with what's going on out there, it's going on beyond their expectations. Their growth has been more significant than they had planned, and by already having three expansions in this short period of time is testament to what's really going on out there. So we anticipate even more good news coming from out there. In another industry sector, in the bioscience, we have another major activity coming up in June, and that's the International Bio Show that will take place in San Diego. We will have over 70 Oklahoma individuals representing everything from new startup companies to educational institutions to existing companies looking for financing and partners going to that. We will, we, the chamber, will be leading the effort of the exhibit on behalf of this industry, and we're pleased to say a number of companies are truly finding funding success when they go to this show. That's a, that's a major leap from where we started. As well, the chamber was recently recognized by the Oklahoma Bioscience Association in our leadership in bioscience with giving us the Hall of Fame Leadership Award at their major banquet the other night. So we were pleased with that. In the area of entrepreneurship, we continue to partner and work very closely with I2E to develop entrepreneurship initiatives. One of the joint projects that we have with them, and it is coming up as well as the Governor's Cup. The Governor's Cup is a university competition where students with an advisor compete against each other on different kinds of business plans and business plan development. They actually win significant amounts of money in doing that. But the most important thing is that they don't just go through the exercise, because now that we've been doing the Governor's Cup, there's actually 18 companies that are now in Oklahoma that have actually come out of this collegiate competition. So it is really doing what we wanted it to do long-term. And Thursday night, there will be an event to recognize those winners, and if any of you would like to attend that event, we'd be glad to host you. Two more quick things. One is our Greater Grad program, our initiative to try to retain and attract talent to the market. We are now expanding beyond Oklahoma. We're actually going to nearby colleges and universities to raise the awareness of our event and to get students to come here. Recently, we've been to Kansas and Arkansas, to those universities, and actually, we're getting a really good reception from the universities in letting us come on their campuses. In late February, we held our annual career fair. We had over 100 companies who were there who were looking for employees. We had over 600 students who actually attended, but they can also do a lot of that stuff online. In our surveys, it was revealed that 82% of the employers who were at that career fair were going to interview after the career fair at least one applicant. So we know jobs are coming out of that. And the other good news is that 76% of the students at the career fair said that they were likely or very likely to stay in Oklahoma upon graduation. Those are almost double numbers of what they were 10 years ago. Our internship program, our summer internship program is next. That begins in June. The good news and bad news about that event is we're running out of places to hold it because we're getting so many students, which is a great problem to have. In that light, there's been some new accolades that have come out about Oklahoma City. I want to just share five with you quick. Business Journals rated us as the seventh-best metro for small business. Area Development Magazine named us the fourth-best leading location for new businesses. CNN Money rated us the seventh-fastest-growing metropolitan city in the United States of cities above a million. Affordable Cities by Forbes, or Forbes, named us the ninth-most affordable city. We've been on that list for a number of years. And finally, Forbes said that we're the 10th-best metro city where workers are moving in their prime, and they call their prime age 35 to 49. Some of us are not in the prime.
That's my prime.
You don't have to move, though. You're already here. So that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions about any of these.
All right. Questions or comments for Roy? Yeah, Pat?
Roy, on the calls you made on existing companies?
Right.
Have you been tracking the addition of jobs in those?
Yes, we do. We track those, and they're all kind of in that process. We, what I'm talking about in calling on 98 companies, that's since January 1. So we're helping 24 of those right now who are in the process of doing that. And we will publish a report on the actual number of jobs, the total dollar investment, square footage, all that. So we'll have it in detail.
Do you really grow your jobs just because of your?
Absolutely. 80, 85% generally, correct.
I guess, Roy, I would also just comment. My team attended the career fair we do every year, and the quality of students was just outstanding. I think we've interviewed at least 10 folks that we met at the career fair and are looking forward to placing them in jobs.
Yeah, the quality is extremely high.
Mayor.
Yes, David. Roy, Councilman Ryan and I have been speaking over the past several weeks about the idea of having an annual oil and gas conference here in Oklahoma City. If we think in terms of Tom Ward's new company's announcement this past weekend, Mr. McClendon's continued expansion with American Energy Partners, Chesapeake, Sandridge, Devon, Continental, we truly are becoming a hub in the oil and gas sector and perhaps a annual conference, especially now that General Electric's research facility is moving in here, would help enhance that image of Oklahoma City. And speaking about Baker Hughes, you know, the oil field service companies continue to put a lot of emphasis on research and development, and perhaps this conference focusing on oil and gas could encompass a lot of those areas with new developments in the oil and gas industry. So we would like to seek your assistance with that.
Okay, we'd be happy to.
And, you know, in a couple of years, have that set where people think of Oklahoma City as the place for this type of a conference. And perhaps the focus should be mainly on research and development in the oil and gas industry.
We would love to work with you.
Great. The other issue is on retail development. You know, it's an important part of the city's economic life, because that's where we get the majority of our revenues from sales tax. So perhaps we could begin looking at, from a city and the chamber's joint efforts to focus on areas within the city that perhaps more effort needs to be focused on in the area of retail development, and we'd like to work with your organization in identifying ways that the city could help with that, as well as your organization. Because I think while overall we've done a tremendous job, and a lot of the credit goes to the Oklahoma City Chamber, there are still pockets within the city that really need some assistance. So I'm just reaching out to get some assistance as to ideas to help overcome those challenges.
Absolutely. And as soon as we get our new person on board, too, we'd be happy to sit down and talk intensively in that area, too.
Any other comments or questions for Roy? Roy, thank you. To you and your staff. We appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Continuing in the office of the mayor, Councilman Shadid will be performing as Vice Mayor the next six months, and we have an appointment that we'll need a motion for. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 1, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 25. All right. Comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, aside from item 8A5, which is listed in your agenda as a continuance until April 15, also on page 15, item 8A6, 8A6, SPOD 729, the applicants requested that this item be deferred until the April 29 meeting. Still on page 15, under item 8C1, B 1622 Northwest Park, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Then on page 16, under item E 2115 Northwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F 1040 Southeast 26th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item G 640 Southeast 30th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or recessed the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority? All right. Comments or questions about the MFA? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCMFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Free items. All right. Comments on the PPA?
Mayor, we do have Mike Myers here to go over the terms of the binding term sheet with the North Care.
Okay. Morning, Mike.
Morning, Mayor, council members, manager couch. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm not going to go, I think you've all seen a copy of this binding term sheet. I'm going to start out a little bit by describing the process that we've gone through and will continue to go through with respect to this binding term sheet. The binding term sheet is, in effect, a summary of the contract, the operating agreement that will occur later. There will also be a separate contract for the acquisition of land for the North Care facility. The land will be acquired through the trust and will be owned by the trust. The actual physical facilities will be, and the capital improvements, will be owned by the city. The separate contract for the acquisition of the land can't be done at this point in time, because we don't know exactly how much land we need for the facility. We have had interviews this past week with architects for the, to provide architectural services for this facility. Once they are onboard and they've had an opportunity to work with Randy Tate and his staff, and Randy is here this morning, we'll be able to determine the exact size and location of the property so that we can acquire the amount that's needed for the site and not have to buy land in excess of what's actually needed. So that will come to you once we've determined what the actual site size and scope is in a separate contract. Then the operating agreement will follow that. Once the architects and North Care have worked out final programming and details of space requirements, the operating agreement can be finalized and brought to you for approval as well. The binding term sheet is a summary of both of those documents that will come to you in the future. I'm not going to go through the entire thing, but I think there are some important items that need to be brought out and mentioned. The operator will be onboard and will be required to participate in the planning process to make sure that the final facility meets their needs and meets the needs of our senior citizens. As a subleases, the sublease provision allows subleases to other entities to provide services at this facility up to a total of 67% of the total facility. This facility is anticipated to have a fair amount of medical and clinical-related services that would be provided by other operators, and we wanted to make sure that while all of that is desirable, at the workshop in October of last year, aquatic facilities and physical fitness facilities were determined by council to be a very important part of this. So the balance of the facility will be dedicated to those kinds of facilities that were requested by council at the workshop. So we want to make sure that that remains a part of this facility. We'll get a list of programs and services to be provided. Fees will be determined by the operator of the facility. They have agreed to work with the city manager and other facilities to try and come up with a sliding scale of fees that is equitable to all citizens of Oklahoma City, so that everyone has an opportunity to use these facilities. Oversight of the facility will be by the city manager or city managers designate. With respect to operating fees, essentially, all aspects of operation will be under the oversight of the city manager or the city managers designate. The operator will be responsible for maintenance. The trust will be responsible for capital items, and those will be defined as items costing $7,500 or more or more. That's fairly typical for a city contract, so that, that will be a part of the final agreement. The operator will have the ability to rent the facility on a short-term basis to other entities. We've discovered that a lot of these facilities are used for weddings, wedding receptions, and other kinds of events that will actually help increase the ability of the facility to raise revenue. Standard insurance requirements from city standards, and that really is a fairly broad overview of what's in the binding term sheet and the kinds of things that you can expect to see in detail once we've developed the final agreements. Are there any questions?
Ed?
Yes, sir.
The land that we're looking at is owned by the school board.
Well, it's a, David, it's the, you want to talk about that? David's been very involved in the, in the actual.
It is. It's currently owned by the school district. There's some tennis courts that are there. It's owned by the school district, but there's an agreement from the '60s that the city takes care of them right now. So we're going to prepare basically an MOU to get to the school board to talk about the land swap. As Mike said, we don't know how big, not swap, but purchase, how big of a site we may need. So we've got to work through site plan issues. And one of the consultants that interviewed here recently had some, some good ideas of maybe not putting the building right on the tennis courts. Maybe it faces the street. So there's a lot of things we can look at. We've got to go through this process of them agreeing in principle that they'll be selling or long-term leasing that property to us, and we'll send it through all the appropriate channels. And then eventually, we'll get to the point where we either buy it or lease it.
So have we had initial conversations? I mean, do they know this is coming?
Yes. Yes. I've talked to the superintendent. I've talked to the, the board member in that area. It's, it's been a topic of conversation with, with their group.
Okay.
And I think they're very excited to see it.
Okay. What, how would you compare this contract with the previous, with Healthy Living? Any significant?
Nearly identical.
Nearly identical, okay.
I mean, the one, I mean, the one real significant difference is because this facility is expected to have more independent operators providing medical and clinical kinds of services, we've limited the number, the amount of leased space that can be utilized for things other than those kinds of activities that were requested by council during the workshop.
Yeah. Any comments or questions for Mike?
I want to make sure I thank Wiley and Amanda Carpenter for all the work they put in on this as well.
We appreciate that, and thank you, Mike, for your work. All right. We have a motion and a second on the PPA? All right. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the pay, claims and payroll today.
Yeah.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and recommine the council meeting with the consent docket.
[inaudible].
All right. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a question on number 6D. Is it dog?
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Pat, let's get started.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. This is a project that involves the existing fountain on the Bricktown, and water features in Oklahoma are difficult to maintain because of the many minerals in the water. Has there been any study on, I'm retreating the water for the fountain, remove those minerals, so it might get longer life out of the thing? Don't believe. Don't believe we've looked at that, we'd be happy to do so.
This is your asking question. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor, we do also have a, I've asked a presentation on a couple of river trust items that are here. We've been working with River Foundation for quite a long time, and Pat Downs is here whenever appropriate to discuss.
Okay. Pat, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, Mayor Cornett, and honorable members of council. For the record, my name is Pat Downs, and I serve as the Director of Development for the Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority. The authority has considered and recommended for your approval three separate but interrelated items, and I was asked to make a brief presentation so as to explain the overview of how these agreements work in concert. The first of which is item 6T on your agenda. That is an amended lease agreement between the City of Oklahoma City and the Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority. That is the base lease that provides the authority, the authority to lease, sublease, develop, maintain, and otherwise take care of the city's assets, real assets, as they lie along the North Canadian River corridor and downstream closer to us, the Oklahoma River corridor. That is simply a clerical change. There are some aspects of that legal description that were in error. In addition, there were some parcels of city-owned property that were not included in that agreement. So the purpose of this first agreement that you will see today is simply to correct the legal description, to provide the accurate overview of what properties are or are not included. The second agreement, which is item U, 6U, is the amended and restated landscaping, maintenance, and public amenities lease agreement between the City of Oklahoma City, the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, and the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation. This agreement has been in place now for several years, but as that venue has grown, both in terms of size and sophistication of operation, it was necessary, the staff determined that we needed to go back and revisit some of the elements of that agreement so that it more accurately reflected the scope of responsibility that the Boathouse Foundation has agreed to take on, and at the same time provides both assurances for unfettered public access in a reasonable way, and yet allow the foundation to manage, maintain, and operate those facilities in an orderly, businesslike fashion, all of which is to the benefit of the general public. So that's the second agreement that you see before you, and it is an agreement that we believe should carry us forward any number of years. We have, we have had an agreement very similar in place. What we've done is simply to fine-tune this to, again, more accurately reflect the scope of activities down there now, which is considerably greater than what we might have imagined some years ago. Item V, 6V, is a revocable permit. After some considerable discussion among the various city departments and the Boathouse Foundation, we determined that perhaps the best way for the city to maintain primacy and public access as appropriate in the river venue itself where the racing and so forth takes place, and at the same time allow the Boathouse Foundation to be our traffic director, if you will, on the river, particularly that area of the river in and around the Boathouse District where so many different schools, from high schools to middle schools to all the way to the university and then collegiate and beyond the Olympic levels, have regular workouts. And so the purpose of that third agreement is basically to allow the Boathouse Foundation to be our traffic director, if you will, to control access during certain times, but in other times when the facility is not under regular use for workouts and training, or it is not under a revocable permit for a special event such as the holiday boat parade or the drag boat races, other things that we have on the river that are not rowing-related, that during those non-rowing exercise times, the facility would be available for the general public. And so all of these agreements, although they are separate, they do, as you can probably tell, work together, and I would like to acknowledge the extraordinary assistance and cooperation of the city manager's office, the city's parks department, as well as Public Works, COTPA, which manages our riverboat fleet, and of course, our river trustees, without whom none of this would have moved forward. It is the recommendation of our authority to approve all of these items, and so we would submit them to you as they have approved.
Comments or questions for Pat? All right, Pat, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Mayor, I have a comment on 6K.
Sale of purchased of water to Edmonds?
This is one of a series of agreements that we have with other municipalities regarding the sale of water, but this does include a new provision, I believe, that has not been incorporated prior. And it provides that if the city sells water to the City of Edmonds, Edmonds would provide water at the city limits lines where Oklahoma City does not have the ability to do it at this point. Many times, the surrounding municipalities are built out to their city limits lines, and right across the street, Oklahoma City has not built out infrastructure services there yet. There's a lot of that in southeast Oklahoma City. This is really a step in the right direction because it, in the past, water sometimes has been used to manipulate sales tax locations, where things would generate sales tax, and this is really a very positive step, I think, and it's kind of lost in this agreement if you don't know that it's in there, but it's a major step toward coordination between the municipalities and sharing of water and so forth. It's a big, it's a big move in the right direction, I think.
All right. Thanks, Pete. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll move on to the concurrence docket. All right, are there any individual considerations on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And that moves us on to item 8. This begins a series of items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 8 at 5516 West Memorial Road. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a facility that is along what I call Restaurant Row. There's about a half a dozen restaurants now that have ABC permits, they're selling alcohol, and this will allow them to eat on an even basis. And it's consistent with what we've done in other buildings in this area, we've allowed an ABC overlay. I would move approval.
Okay. Comments or questions on item 8A1? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Your Honor, I also like the urgency of this.
Okay. Cast your votes. It passes 8-0. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 10624 Southwest 29th Street. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a single-family residential zero-lot line district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up to? This was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission. It is a less intense zoning, it's already in place, and so unless the council has any comments, I'd like to move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8A3 is also in Ward 3 at 700 Virginia Drive. It's currently R1, single-family, and it would become an I-2, moderate industrial district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? This is in an area that is in transition, and I'd just like the applicant to give us a brief overview of what's involved. There were no protests at the Planning Commission, I believe?
No protest at all. Matter of fact, our recommendations are, thank you, Mr. McAtee, and members of council. Yes, it was unanimously approved and recommended. The rest of the parcels leading from there, north to 10th Street, are all I-2. The parcel to the east is I-2, that's central liquor and large operation there. It's been historically I-2. The parcel to the south is owned by the present buyer of this parcel, which is also I-2. It's merely a connection of the two.
Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
Okay. We're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is also in Ward 3. It's at 12120 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a planned unit development. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? There was a protester at the Planning Commission. We met with that protester, and I think we have agreed to disagree and to move forward on this. This has got a, it's a unique parcel of land, it's in accord with the southwest sector plan. It's going to allow the bringing of water into this area. That will also benefit other neighborhoods out there in the future if they wish to tap in. It also has some very nice fencing that's a part of the PUD, and so unless the council has some questions, or unless the applicant just wants to speak, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A5 has been deferred until April 15th. Item 8A6 has been deferred until April 29th. Item 8A7 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 721 West Britton Road. It's currently R1, single-family, and C3, community commercial district, and it would become a new spud. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission approved. I see the applicant is present. Do we have any protesters? Madam Clerk?
No one has signed up.
I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 8A7. It passed unanimously. Item 8A8 is also in Ward 7 at 1432 Northwest 7th Street. It's currently R2, medium-low-density residential, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see the applicant is present. This particular spud is turning old school, the Dunbar School, to a potential where it may end up being senior housing. The applicant did meet with the Neighborhood Association, and Neighborhood Association is in full support of this development. So therefore, do we have any protesters? Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move for approval.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
This and the last, the one, the item that preceded this are just really good examples, I think, of the Board of Education's interest in trying to do something that has been a longstanding problem. These abandoned schools have set and set and set, and I think the current board is really very aggressive about trying to find new uses for them, move them back in, get them, in effect, back on the tax rolls. And I think these are two just really good examples of where that's working very well. I just want to compliment them for the aggressive way that they've marketed both these facilities.
We're voting on item 8A8. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8B is a request for a special permit in Ward 3. This is a special permit to operate a community recreation use. Larry, you okay with this?
Yes, this is on the west side of the I-44, the Woodson Park area. They're converting the Woodson Park area from what it used to be used for into a soccer complex. It's, will be a very popular amenity in this part of town, and I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8B. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8C? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8D? All right, how about a motion there? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8E is a couple of revocable rights-of-way permits. The first is the Festival of the Arts, which is a couple of weeks away, and I see Peter DeLisi and Angela Cosby headed their way. It's almost time.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council. Yes, we're getting very close. Forty-eighth Annual Festival of the Arts coming up, starting on April 22nd. And this year, April 22nd is also the 125th anniversary of the land run of the state. It's pretty wonderful. So we've got some exciting activities associated with the land run, and that will also be going on in conjunction with the festival. And also, the opening ceremonies, we're going to have all the, all the mayors, past and present mayors, will be at the ceremony. We've also invited all the council to come, and all past council members, too, have been invited to the opening ceremony. It's going to be a really wonderful celebration for our city, and we're pretty excited that it's also on the very first day of the 45th Annual Festival of the Arts. Here to tell you more about that is Angela Cosby, our festival director.
Hello, thanks for having us today. As Peter mentioned, we're very excited about the 125th anniversary, and some special activities that we have planned are in correlation with our children's activity. On that opening day of festival, children can come to the children's art field and create a special origami kite that will be decorated with 125th anniversary stickers. You can go to the face painting area and get $125, put on your cheek, and also I heart OKC. And then also, we're going to be partnering with the downtown library to offer storytelling in the children's garden, so those will be stories in relation to Oklahoma City and our great state. Opening day, April 22nd, is also Earth Day, and Festival of the Arts is continuing our Go Green initiative. This is our biggest year where we are composting on the grounds. It's very rare for an event of this size to take on such a large process, but we are doing it because we know that it's better for the environment of not only our state but Oklahoma City. So it's, we're very excited. All of the food vendors will have to offer compostable and recyclable materials. And speaking of food, we have lots of new food vendors this year. One that I'm very excited about is Robert Painter with Blue Bell Grill out of Guthrie. He's going to have fried chicken and mashed potatoes. And then another vendor called The Sugar Shack is going to offer all desserts. We have, of course, 144 fine artists on Hudson Street. We have over 20 Oklahoma artists in the Sculpture Park, along with this special art installation in which we're partnering with Plaza District artists. So that's kind of the first time for the Arts Festival, and so we spend a fine new community partnerships. Three stages, over 200 performers. Art moves are daily. Our activity will be actually doing art moves on the move during the festival, so you can see pop-up performances throughout. So we have a lot to offer, we're really excited, and we'll see you all on April 22nd.
Okay, it's exciting. Two weeks from today.
One more thing just to mention. I think it's pretty exciting. She mentioned about the environmental impact of an event of this size, but over the last five years, Angela and her team, the Go Green team, have slowly and methodically implemented this plan where we are now looking at a zero-trash event. This is huge. An event of this size, you know, between half a million to three-quarters of a million people, and to have all the trash recycled is just fantastic, and it's something that her team's been working on for a long time, and we're very, very proud of that. And I think we're doing what Oklahoma City does best, which is being the pioneer in issues like this that are so important for events all over the world, and we're really excited to be part of that here in Oklahoma.
Yeah, that's exciting. I hadn't heard about that aspect of your, congratulations on it.
You'll hear about it.
Well, speaking of that, Mayor, I mean, Peter, that's extremely important, and you're right. Maybe we could have a presentation at some later point and take some of the examples that you've used in your event and share it with the State Fair and other activities.
Absolutely. Well, our plan, which Angela could at some point tell you a lot more about it, it was a five-year plan, a strategic plan that implemented this over a variety of different stages. A lot of it had to do with also informing all the food vendors how they could really participate in this, and how, you know, I mean, every fork, every plate, it's just amazing, all the different pieces of it, but it took a lot of education and it took time. It's not one of those things you can just do, you know, in a minute. But her five-year plan, that strategic plan, has already won a national award.
Yes, from Keep American, Keep America Beautiful, and then we've been recognized by Keep Oklahoma Beautiful and OKC Beautiful. But the Keep America Beautiful, I mean, as Peter said, that's bringing recognition to Oklahoma, and I have had other event managers throughout the states call and ask how we do it and for us to share that strategic plan. When they're planning, Gentleman of the Road in Guthrie, the organizers, called me months in advance because they have heard about what we were doing with the Arts Festival.
I really would like to focus on the food. I'm on that food committee, as you can probably tell. There's a lot of great food. But the vendors were really responsive to this, and it just felt like a really good partnership. You had your green committee at all of the food tastings, so they could talk to them about where they about where they could get the supplies. And it is a little bit more expensive. You know, they had to go out and find things they could use, but to get everybody to participate at that high level, I think is, you know, really a compliment. So thank you for working on that so hard.
Our green team is made of professionals in the field and that, that plan is available and it's a very comprehensive plan, so it could really come in helpful to any other events that would like to use it. We'd love to share it with anyone.
Thank you both. Do you have something else?
Nope.
Okay, thanks.
We're waiting on the vote.
A motion? A second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you for that.
Huh? All right, and we also have a revocable right-of-way permit request on the Color Run, which is on Northeast Fiftieth Street. Anyone here representing this event today? All right, how about a motion?
I move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight F is a salary continuation. I understand we do not need executive session on this item? Okay, how about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. Item eight F passes unanimously. Item eight, G, H, and I are really companion items to an issue we've already dealt with earlier in the agenda. If there's no comments or questions or requests, go to executive session. I'll just look for a motion on eight E.
I can give you just a quick summary on this, that the children were injured in an accident that killed the officer. We paid for the hospital bills for the children in settlements on the, there was a claim of negligence and there was a settlement on that and so we are able to reclaim some of the costs of the, of the health insurance that we paid due to negligence of others.
Okay. Okay, we're voting on item eight G first. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. How about a motion on item eight H?
We got it.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then a motion on eight I.
We got it.
Cast your votes there and it passes as well. Item eight J, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
How about a motion to strike?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item eight K is claims recommended for denial.
We got it.
All right, Don Schramm?
What a little case law with me. I'm not going to go through all of this because this is going to end up going to civil litigation. I'm pretty sure of it. We've covered all this two weeks ago. I thought there would be an investigation. A little disappointed. Never heard from anyone in two weeks. In three minutes and thirty seconds, in a city council meeting, is really not sufficient to present to this council all the very critical issues that I have to deal with. Start off with, the city has been repeatedly advised through the years, through pleadings, through no trespassing signs verbally and in every possible format to stay off my property. It's completely disregarded and I haven't been protected by the, by any city entity at all. City maintains that they have an implied right to come on my property anytime they want, any, wherever they want to go because they're the city. That's not true. And I have case law that says that search warrants are required for city inspectors to trespass on posted property. The state law confirms it and the city ordinances cannot contradict state law. It cannot violate my fourth and fourteen constitutional rights. The seizure of my personal belongings from my property was done without a warrant and it was unreasonable. You rely on your city attorney's office to advise you. And I'm guessing that everyone received a copy of this memo that came out from the city council, municipal councillor's office. I received a letter, too, dated April first, mailed April first, telling me that the city council meeting wasn't on the eighth, it's on the first. There was no notice to me for all the activities leading up to the illegal seizure of my property. And this is one of many occasions where dates for hearings have changed. Judge Parrish is well aware of this. You go through this memo and my address isn't even right on the memo. You go to the dates. Action taken, twelve twelve, December twelfth of 2013. You write in here, "An independent contractor performed nuisance abatement, December eighteenth. I filed a petition with the district court. December twentieth, the district court issued a ruling." And then you go to the next page and it tells you that the contractor's abatement was performed on the same day that I filed my petition in district court and two days before Judge Parrish issued an order. It's completely inconsistent with the previous page and it's inconsistent with the facts because I got home from work to find out that my yard had been raped. All my firewood for the winter. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, you weren't here two weeks ago when I explained what all had been taken. And my claim, I told the city council, I backed up everything. I went on the internet and I had to research every single thing and I found items and I, I went to the lowest available item, the lowest cost. I'm not trying to take advantage of this travesty. All I want is to be left alone. I have had, I have had a peeping Tom wearing the uniform of a city employee watching me take a nap through my window. I have had another one in a city employee's uniform actually place his hands on me and attempt to take liberties that were most certainly unwelcome. And then I have the code enforcement who, who they don't want to comply with state law. They don't want to recognize my civil rights and they just feel like they have a right to do whatever they want and there's no, there's no rational reason to it. You want to know about the, I'm almost-
You almost finished?
Almost done. Just a quick second.
Make some remarks if I could.
The city's, the city councillor's office has this memo where they talk about the but-for test. But for the fact that the city code enforcement came up on posted property without a warrant and conducted investigations, conducted illegal searches, and later conducted an illegal That's why this city is responsible. But for the fact that that started the ball rolling yet again, this wouldn't have come to this point. I would still be in possession of my firewood that I didn't have for the winter. I would still have my lawn furniture and I would still have my other personal possessions. And I wouldn't feel violated.
Thank you, Ms. Schramm, for coming back down. And I think a comment you just made, which was yet again, is maybe the way to start some of this conversation. I do want you to know that we took very seriously all of the remarks that you made when you came before us two weeks ago. Following our meeting, city staff watched the tape of the meeting and recorded every single allegation that was made in your presentation two weeks ago. I personally met with a team of city staff, including several members from the municipal councillor's office. We've reviewed each one of those and I think that Rick is probably here today to respond to some of those on behalf of the municipal councillor's office. So let's let that happen and I do want to say, Ms. Schramm, just in terms of confusion about the dates, we set this hearing, and I'm not sure, I didn't see the letter, but we did set the hearing today in your presence when you were here two weeks ago. So there shouldn't be any confusion about the eighth being the date.
And then I get the subsequent letter that says, you say, well, first of all, I don't think so. I'm going to go with the eighth.
The eighth, that's the correct date. So, Rick, would you mind letting us know about the investigation because there were some serious allegations made?
Yes, ma'am. Richard Smith, City Attorney's Office. As Ms. Schramm points out, there are some typos in our memo and I apologize for that. The first typo says that her property was inspected the first time on ten eleven. It was actually ten one and it was posted with the violation. Told her how to appeal it if she wanted to. In fact, she called that day, according to our records, and didn't ask for an appeal, just told us that we couldn't inspect her property. That's not true. We have state law authority to inspect property for nuisances. She was mailed a notice on ten two of 2013 that told her how to appeal it. She didn't appeal it. It was inspected again fifteen days later and still nothing had been done. Pictures are being passed around that show the condition of the property, both on ten one as well as on twelve twelve, when it was actually abated. We went to get-
I'm sorry, I need to reject this picture.
We're going to let Mr. Smith finish his presentation.
We actually went to the municipal court and got a warrant that allowed us, or a court order, which is a search warrant, which is a seizure warrant, that allowed us to go to the property and abate the nuisance. That was done on October sixty, twenty-first. So again, she had almost two months before we actually hired an independent contractor to go onto the property to clean up the property or appeal. She didn't either. On twelve twelve, the property was, the nuisance was abated. On twelve eighteen, she filed her lawsuit. On twelve twelve, there was an emergency hearing that authorized us to do what we'd already done. So we don't believe that we have done anything wrong. We don't believe our independent contractor did anything wrong and we don't think that this council should approve her claim.
I also want to be clear that I did investigate the claims of harassment with regard to our inspector and some of these other personnel issues and all of those appear to be unfounded. So I, I'm not sure where we go. This is an unfortunate situation of sort of an ongoing nuisance problem. Ms. Schramm, you've got a file that's extremely large. Our legal staff has, has a similar file. I think we've been working with you for six years, perhaps, in this area and I'm going to have to recommend that this claim be denied as well.
Yes. Rick, what types of items were removed by the independent contractor?
There's a list and I'm sorry, I, her, her, her claim said that there were ricks of wood, plastic water bottles, vintage metal lawn chairs, soft-settled, soft-sided pet carrier, hard-sided pet carrier, box fan, coffee, tea table, landscape timber, sheet plywood, urn, planter, and it just keeps going on and on. There's several pages of what she claims was there. The pictures show it. It just appears to be ordinary household goods out in the yard as opposed to stored somewhere where you can't see them.
Yeah, was, was the initial contact us a result of a complaint? Or staff see it or what, what started the initial action by the city?
This is one of our proactive areas, so the inspectors in the area and they picked up several, several complaints in that area during that time.
What's the size of the property? Do you have that there?
Probably seventy-five hundred square feet. It's a normal house lot.
Okay.
And Mayor, the memo from the municipal councillor's office to me that was dated on April fourth said that each of the items removed from Ms. Schramm's property by the authorized independent contractor meet the definition of trash in our city ordinance.
I'm a little bit confused looking at the pictures. I mean, I, some of it doesn't look that orderly, but I would imagine that there's just a tremendous number of homes in Oklahoma City that would, would, would be open to having similar actions. I mean, the firewood looks neatly organized. I mean, is that, well, maybe that's not. But there, well, there's another one where it's stacked. I don't, I mean, what is, what are, what regulates firewood collection? I mean, is, what are the rules?
It just has to be kept orderly. I mean, her property, there was huge trunks of a tree. There is, it's just scattered all over the yard. It's not rigged up, as she stated. It's scattered all over the yard. It lends itself to, you know, insect and rodent harbors when it's like that. It's a healthy issue.
And councillor, apparently the pictures that I was pointing are, is after it's been loaded into our contractor's truck. So it's not like the pictures were taken when he showed up. We'll see some of them, but they're in the, in the back of a vehicle or on the trailer. That is what has already been done after the independent contractor. This is pictures before.
Is that how she had?
These are pictures of it before.
Is this how she had somewhere?
I would assume so.
So was that, that's scattered neatly?
That's, that's just one of the, I believe that was, that's probably what was close to what she had. Then there is a photo showing scattered, that's what it's becoming.
I don't know why you, why we would confiscate something as neatly organized that. I mean, after we just approved composting.
Simply because of the rest of the yard was not like that. The rest of the yard was totally, you know, covered with, with cut-up trees and everything else.
Okay.
Don, I'll give you a final word before we vote, if you'd like.
I appreciate that, Mayor Cornet. The logs that you see were not scattered all across the yard. They were, they had been cut from a tree that was dead alongside the front driveway and it has to be dried before it can be cut into, split into logs. So that's what it was doing there. And it has to be turned every so often until the wood is completely dried so that it can be split. And I was told that, that it's called seasoning and that's what I was told by somebody who does firewood because I had, I had this tree that was coming down and I had to ask about And, you know, taking my dog's water bowl, taking my dog's swimming pool. I have a black lab. I mean, it's hard to keep organization when you have a one-year-old black lab puppy running amok, taking everything. He takes up water jugs and runs across the yard with it. I, I do what I can and I had just put in about a year ago or so, a new septic line. And so a lot of those things had been put onto that concrete driveway pad that's, that it's kind of hard to see because the leaves are covering the driveway pad from the, the con trees. But I had put everything on there and tried to keep everything very neat so that when the, when the mound covering the new septic line sinks enough, that I can put everything back where it was. I also have a patio that's getting ready to go in, too. It's not that I'm not trying to work on my property, but certain things have to happen in a certain order. And with, now I'm leg-shackled, I can't even put scaffolding. I can't bring any wood to do any projects at my house because I never know when the city's going to come out and take my stuff again. And this has just happened with someone else who was on Channel Nine for the same thing and she didn't get noticed either.
Your Honor, may I ask a question?
Yeah, Dave.
Maybe Charles or Rick. What's the general rule with respect to code enforcement addressing issues in residents' backyards versus the front yard? Is there a distinction?
Mr. Locke says there's no difference.
Okay. Now, I've been told that, you know, we don't normally go into people's backyards, so that's an incorrect statement.
I believe we will go into backyards, but we have an obligation to make sure that the, the yard is not overflowing with trash because that will increase rodent population.
I understand. I'm just trying to give clarity.
I'm just trying to give clarification, official clarification, that code enforcement will pursue issues whether they're in the resident's front yard or backyard, regardless of what type of fencing they may have.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, Don, I'm sorry it got to this point, and I wish the city hadn't felt like it needed to be involved, but we do have a lot of neighborhoods to look after. I'm going to look for a motion on the item and the rest of them.
We have a motion to deny it.
All right, the motion is to deny. Cast your votes, and the action is denied along with the others on item 8K.
And so, Don, I just want to be sure that you, and you do know this, obviously, you have recourse to go across the street to court. All righty, thanks.
Item 8L, understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right, how about a motion to move item 8L into executive session? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9 is Claims Recommended for Approval. Is there a motion on item 9? Anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under item 9? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is Items from Council. James, you have anything today? Ed?
I think a million-dollar claim is farcical, but there are things about that that bother me. I mean, it feels like a little bit of a slippery slope to go into people's backyards and take firewood. I can imagine some of our poorer neighborhoods that that could be abused. I just, I think we have to be vigilant that government doesn't enter private property and take things that it doesn't need to. And that firewood that was neatly organized, that seems like, maybe it's justified. I just, I could see how that could be a slippery slope, and it gives me pause. Thanks.
Larry?
Just thank you, and a couple of things real quick. James and I had the privilege of observing Saturday. The Friends of Northwest 10th Street held their 7th Annual Community Fair out at the DHS Building on Northwest 10th. Very well received. Our fire department was out there, our police department, a number of nonprofits who provide services for the people who live along Northwest 10th Street. And it was just great to see the kids out there having a great time with their parents. And my congratulations, and I think James also, to the Friends of Northwest 10th Street for sponsoring that. And then last Thursday, we had the privilege, the Windsor Area Business Group had the privilege of hosting the ULI folks at a lunch at Pace Butler on Northwest 23rd, where the plans to reinvigorate the commercial area along Northwest 10th Street were explained, and the vision that the Windsor Area Business Group has to turn that into a destination place. I may have this a little bit wrong, but "See the world with a W" is kind of their slogan. It's going to be an international venue in the future where folks can come out and enjoy cuisine from a number of different countries and fellowship together. In that regards, they're doing a streetscape on Northwest 10th, and I hope the people who use Northwest 10th and Meridian will have patience during this time because it is an extensive construction. And city manager, we've already talked to Eric, and if we could just be real conscious when we do have to close intersections and make sure that the signage is appropriate. There's been a question over whether the no-left-turn signalization, or signage, excuse me, that is sufficient, and it's in a construction zone. So if people get ticketed for going and making a left turn when it's illegal at this time, it's double the fine. And so if we could just be careful to make sure that the signage warning people no-left turns or things like that are done, I'd really appreciate it. But it's a great event, and the growing pains that come. I apologize for the inconvenience, but we're excited about what's going on out there. The sidewalks are already in in one portion of it, making it more walkable. The new street lighting will be put in in the future along with some very good new intersections, and that's what's being torn up right now. Thank you, your honor.
Pete? David? Meg?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a couple of things. Folks that came to work on Broadway today found a whole new era going on, and I want to thank the city manager and Eric Winger and his whole staff, the merchants along Broadway and Automobile Alley have been working on this project for probably four years. It's, you know, again, another example of a public-private partnership. The Automobile Alley Association paid for 99% of the engineering study and worked with staff to refine it and make it work. And it was striped over the weekend. I was standing there working all day on Saturday, and it's just changed the entire feel of the area. So I think it's going to be a great change, and we are going to find out how this grid thing works. This is, you know, kind of a really good test to see, you know, if it's a little bit congested on Broadway, whether or not people spread out and use Robinson and use Oklahoma, and I think they will, and I think it's really exciting to see. A couple of us also had the opportunity last week to go out to Tinker Air Force Base, meet with General Litchfield, and observe some of the really exciting things that are going on out here. And I just, he remarked on more than one occasion about the very unique relationship that this community has with all of the men and women in the service out at Tinker and how special it is, and you can feel it when you're out there. So, thank you very much.
John? All right, Pat? Okay. City manager reports?
Nothing today.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Has anyone signed up?
Yes.
Okay. We have one person that's signed up. I'll ask anyone who's here today to speak of citizens to be heard to keep their comments to three minutes. John Silver? Morning, John.
Councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I come here today because I want to talk about the activities at the Will Rogers Park Plaza Shopping Center, so-called shopping center at Northwest 29th and Portland, and specifically the bars that operate at 3034 North Portland. I know that you're all unfortunately very familiar with what happened there early Sunday morning. I was awakened about 1:15 by gunfire, and I hear the screams and the racing engines and the squealing tires, and I know that something's happened yet again over there. So I go look out the front window, and I see everybody fleeing. I hear by my count 12 more shots, and I see the police running up and down the street with their spotlights, and I realize they've not caught the perpetrator. So I go on guard, make sure my doors and windows are locked, arm myself, I've got my phone and my flashlight. This isn't paranoia. The police have arrested people in my backyard before, after fleeing these various events. This has been going on for 30 years. You can search the police records. You can see there's been any number of violent acts over there. There's been multiple crimes of different types, ongoing noise complaints. Three young men were arrested Sunday morning for dealing drugs inside the bar. There's a white van that shows up periodically in the parking lot. It's unmarked. All the kids know it's there. All of a sudden, they're selling something out of the back door for a few minutes, and then it's gone again, and this continues on. But the problem here is not the bar itself, the operators. The operators change frequently. The names and the operators change constantly. The constant here is the property owner, who continues to not only allow this to go on in his property, but you can almost think that he condones it by his choice of tenant and his ongoing attempts to increase the adult entertainment venues on this piece of property. This activity in the municipal code is fined, rather, as a public nuisance. When the church at 30th and Claussen that had become a bar had a shooting, it was declared a nuisance and closed down. When there was a shooting outside the Thunder Game, city council changed everything. There was a shooting recently in Bricktown outside one of the venues. And the conversation becomes, should we allow this type of venue in a family entertainment district? But we do it for 30 years in my neighborhood. I ask you to ask yourselves, if this was going on 300 feet from your front door, would it be a public nuisance? The police do all they can. They do a fantastic job. When we call them, they're right there. But they are necessarily reactive. I'd like to submit to you today that it's time for the city council to be proactive, to look at this, put a stop to the threat to the safety, welfare, and the peace in my neighborhood, and shut down this public nuisance. Thank you.
I feel your pain. I feel your pain because I have several shopping centers similar to the one in your backyard.
Yep.
So I personally feel your pain.
Thank you.
And my community feels your pain.
Okay, thank you.
David, you have a say?
Well, yes, I think this is an issue that is citywide, that isn't restricted to just certain parts of the city. And I myself would like to have a better understanding of what constitutes a public nuisance and when we can enforce actions against those types of facilities. Certainly, these types of clubs or bars tend to attract certain types of activity that really needs to be closely monitored. But there are other instances where we just have a high incidence of police reports. And so anyway, my point is, I think the gentleman has a very important statement to make, and I would like to further investigate that and see if we can classify that as a public nuisance and take action.
Jim, can you get at the council some information on the definition of a public nuisance and perhaps any information or experiences other municipalities in the state have had in exercising the public nuisance ordinance?
Sure. Be happy to do so.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming down. Anybody else want to speak before we go to executive session? All right, we'll be back.